I have a lot to share. It's been a busy month across all of our schools in North Borough. So you'll hear a lot of overlap. We have a lot of the same activities and initiatives that we've been working on. So I'll try to be as concise as possible while sharing all the great things that are happening in our school. So Lincoln Street, along with all of our schools, we've all seen our students and our staff members really settle into our learning routines. All of our schools have reviewed safety procedures and have had practice drills, fire drills, and safe school readiness drills. So across our schools, we've all engaged in those and had the opportunity to partner with the North Borough Police Department and the North Borough Fire Department as well. And students did an excellent job. And we were able to debrief the experiences and make adjustments and get feedback from those departments as well, which has been really helpful. At Lincoln Street, the staff have been trained in the Second Step program, and all classrooms began using those lessons this past week. So they have dedicated time in their schedules daily for that program, and it's the implementation to help students build their social-emotional toolboxes. So Lincoln Street's very excited about kicking that off this past week. Lincoln Street students, along with the other elementary schools, also participated in an interactive event using the Makey Makey Circuits with Lori Hibbert, our Instructional Technology Specialist. And she modeled with every classroom across our schools how students can combine the Makey Makey with coding to create an interactive presentation. So this past week, students engaged in a mini lesson with the conductive materials and got to make pumpkins sing. So you could hear when you were going through our schools, you know, cats and all these different spooky sounds, and they were able to use coding and the circuit work in order to make a song. So that was a really great experience. The kids loved it and were looking forward to using more Makey Makey experiences in our classrooms. So the goal is every month to provide opportunities to the students and then also have students work with Mrs. Hibbert to bring it into the classrooms. The Lincoln Street PTO is wrapping up their spooky silent auction, and the money raised from the PTO will bring high-quality programming to the school. And it also provides the means for grant opportunities for teachers, for extra educational supplies, and materials. On the 7th at Lincoln Street, they will have a Veterans Day Assembly. The program will include a special guest from the American Legion, Lincoln Street Family Veterans, local scouts leading the pledge, a color guard presentation, patriotic music, and they'll close with a moment of silence. And during the week prior to the assembly, students are learning about what a veteran is and why we have the holiday to honor our veterans. And lastly, for Lincoln Street, they're hosting a Turkey Trot Fund Run, and they're hoping to raise $5,000. And that's alongside their Scholastic Book Fair. So a lot of great events happening at Lincoln Street. At Peaslee, the kindergartners went on their first field trip of the school year. They went to Honey Pot Farm and had a great fall day, experiencing pumpkin picking. They enjoyed cider and donuts and just had a really great time exploring the farm together as classes. During Peaslee's October All-School Meeting, they revisited the important core value of perseverance. The achievements of students who have worked hard to persevere in different ways were celebrated amongst the students and the staff. And over the month, they're going to continue to focus on practicing perseverance in their lives, both at home and at school. And they're going to continue to recognize the achievements and talents of the Peaslee students in their all-school meetings. Fifth graders at Peaslee have also begun working on strengthening their leadership skills, being the oldest students at the school. And so their teachers have organized committees based on both student-driven and identified needs. And students have the option to sign up and join a group to collaborate with peers and identify a project and lead that within their school community. So the fifth graders are very excited, very enthusiastic about the work ahead. So I'm sure that Dr. Kokli will present more information on that over the course of the year. The fifth graders also completed a highly engaging fall STEAM activity to build their critical thinking skills. And the goal of the project was to learn about pulleys and then come up with a collaborative design, test, and communicate their innovative designs with actual pumpkins. They also had a fund run this past month, and they reached their fundraising goal of $5,000. And the funds raised support enrichment activities, playground equipment, and teacher grants at the Peaslee School. And lastly, the PTO hosted a trunk-or-treat this past week, and it was very festive, very fun. Students and the community alike enjoyed it, and they're looking forward to a book fair as well, the week of the 7th. Proctor was also very busy during the month of October. Again, we settled into our learning routines. You can really see the progress that students have made in terms of coming into school, getting ready for learning, and becoming much more independent in all of the routines that we're teaching them across all school environments. We had our first school meeting of the year in October, all-school meeting, and we identified a community goal. And our community goal is helping to ensure that our school is a safe, welcoming environment, and we do that by showing respect for our building and our grounds. So as a school community, we identified ways that we can take care of our school. And we also introduced the Golden Brim Award. So every week, a classroom that's gone above and beyond to care for our school community gets awarded the Golden Brim Award, and they keep that for the week in their classroom. So it's been very motivating, and kids are excited to, you know, they'll see me in the hallway, and they're like, "Did you see our classroom? And, you know, we swept up the floor." So they're really, really taking extra time to attend to the school. We also began our Second Step lessons during the month of October. And just like Lincoln Street School, we have a weekly dedicated time for the lessons, and we use interactive videos and modeling and activities with the students to focus on these social-emotional lessons with the students, as well as read-alouds. We've added read-alouds in that support the learning. And additionally, we're really excited because we were awarded a six-month NEF grant that focuses on yoga and mindfulness and building a toolbox related to all of those skills. And we started today. Mrs. Borsini, who is a certified yoga instructor and parent at Proctor, is leading all of these sessions with our students. And we also have a mindfulness component that we're bringing into our staff with someone who has attended the UMass Mindfulness Institute. So we started today, and it was very zen in the gym. I got to participate with a couple of the classrooms, and it was just amazing. It, you know, it was developmentally geared towards each of the grade levels. Students loved it. They were talking about it afterwards. So we'll start carrying all of that work into the classrooms during the days and weeks that Mrs. Borsini is not with us actively teaching us. So we're very grateful to NEF for that grant. We also had a PTO-sponsored Perfection on Wheels enrichment event, which was BMX stunt riders that came in and had ramps and did all these amazing tricks and focused on character building and anti-bullying messages in their presentation. So that was highly enjoyed by the students and the staff. And we also had a very successful fund run at Proctor. Thank you to our students and families. We raised over $10,000, which all goes back to support our school. So we were thrilled with the fundraising that went into the fund run event, and we had a great time at the fund run. And lastly, looking ahead to November, all of our schools will welcome our caregivers in for conferences next week. So it's a great opportunity to connect with our families, share student progress, set learning goals, social-emotional goals for the next couple of months and into the spring, where we'll meet again in March for conferences. And we also have across our schools a band and chorus informant in November. And that's an opportunity for our students to showcase what they've learned thus far. It's kind of like a music tasting, where we get a taste of what they've learned to see their progress. And then we'll have our concerts in January. So that's nice to look forward to that. And at the Z School, October again was a great month. The PTO scheduled a visit with the WPI Robotics Team that showed how teamwork, perseverance, problem-solving, and STEM skills are all important to the work that we do every day with each other. Z also had two literacy events in connection with the book fair week that they hosted. And at the family read-aloud night, students enjoyed read-alouds with staff members, enjoyed cookies and milk. And they also had their Mount Pisgah Story Walk hike, which is a favorite in the Z community. And so families walked the trail. They had a beautiful fall morning in which to do that and got to enjoy the storyboards along the trail as well. Melican Middle School has had an extremely busy month. In October, they recognized National Bullying Prevention Month, and they partnered with the District Attorney's Office. And they had a representative from the office come in and speak to each of the three grades on bullying, cyberbullying, and internet safety. And the students were very engaged in the presentations. They asked really important and great questions to help them build their understanding. And it also provided a common language that the staff and students could use together when they're working through issues related to this. This year, Melican will perform Matilda Jr. So last week's informational night saw many new students and families that, you know, are excited to perform, get ready to join in some capacity, and they're looking forward to the performers developing their skills over the next couple of months and then performing for everybody. The cross-country season ended last week at Melican, and soccer and field hockey seasons conclude this week. They're thankful for their coaches and the parent support throughout the fall athletic season. I know it's been challenging in a lot of schools to get, you know, coaches and secure that. So Melican is very appreciative of all the efforts of their coaches. And tryouts for interscholastic basketball take place right after Thanksgiving, so that's right around the corner. Last week for Melican was especially busy with the parent-teacher conferences taking place on Tuesday and Thursday. The book fair also took place, and they had their World of Difference Peer Leadership Program, participated in two half-days and one full day of anti-bias and leadership training with the Melican students. Additionally, students and staff from Assavet Valley Regional Technical High School visited and presented to the eighth graders. And there's also an opportunity for those interested in Assavet to attend a tour later this month. And eighth graders are also, they also attended a performance at the Hanover Theater last week, which I know a couple of Melican students visited Proctor this week and were talking about what a great experience that was. So November for Melican, they will have their Student Council sponsoring their first Spirit Week. Halloween costumes, you know, were part of that this past Monday, which I heard was also very fun for the middle school students. And they collected donations for the North Borough Food Pantry as part of the dressing up with the costumes on Monday. And lastly, for Melican, their sixth graders head to Boundless Adventures for some team building next week. The PTO graciously agreed to support the field trip. And before Thanksgiving, students and staff from Algonquin will present to the eighth graders. They'll also hold their annual Turkey Trot the day before Thanksgiving. So lots of things happening at Melican and across the North Borough Elementary Schools.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation. I just have two quick questions. One about the Makey Makey Circuits. Is it for all the grades? What do they do?
Yep. So all the grades signed up. And I can speak for Proctor specifically. Every single classroom got to go for about a 25, 30-minute presentation where Ms. Hibbert explained what it was and, you know, how the coding and the circuitry work together and showed them a couple of different ways that worked with objects that weren't the pumpkins. So she demoed what it's like, how you can do a state and capital project with it. And then students got to experience what it's like to code and make their own circuit. And then as a class, they did it together. So it was a really packed experience for the 25, 30 minutes, but the students loved it. And they brought a lot of their own background knowledge related to coding and the circuitry to the experience. So the goal is every month is to do something different with the Makey Makey program and software and then bring that into the classroom. So classroom teachers can partner with Mrs. Hibbert to bring that in and do something related to a unit of study.
That's great. And then the other question I have is about middle school. I don't know if you know, is it all the schools, all the grades that dress up, sixth, seventh, and eighth?
I believe so, yep.
Okay. Well, that would be very exciting, you know, for my fifth grader, because my husband was saying, "Oh, this is your last year dressing up." So she'll be very excited by that. I'm going to go down the line and see if anybody else has anything. Bryce, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Erin?
I had one quick question about the Second Step.
Yes.
You mentioned, I think, Lincoln and Proctor started it. Do the other schools already participate in that or?
I believe there's components of it, of the program, in some of the other schools. I don't know definitively what that looks and sounds like, but all of us are doing social-emotional learning. And so Lincoln Street and Proctor right now are using that curriculum. But we're all working together, and I know in our job alikes, our PLCs for our school psychologists and behavior specialists, that's a piece of their work too, is some of that social-emotional learning and bringing those experiences and those learning opportunities to our students.
And is that for K through five?
Yes.
Thanks.
I can just add a little bit to that, too. All four elementary schools do have Second Step. And as Alana said, they don't necessarily have exactly the same systems for how they use it. In some cases, it might be the homeroom teachers are using it. In other schools, it might be that the behavior specialist is involved in teaching the lessons. And that has varied, like during COVID, that got switched up a bit. Lincoln Street had, it was new at Lincoln Street, whereas the other three already had it. So that's why it was sort of a bigger highlight for Lincoln Street. But we also continue to have conversations about kind of how we use Second Step, the connections to the data from the screeners, and, you know, what are the, what are sort of all the ways to continue to move these programs in alignment with the CASL framework?
Great. Thanks. John, any questions?
I had a question about the Turkey Trotts. So do all schools have those, and is it during the school day or is it on Thanksgiving?
So it's during the, ours is the, is the week of the 14th. So we do it right before Thanksgiving. I don't know, I don't think all the schools do them. I think they do different activities that, you know, raise funds or bring in support for community organizations like the North Borough Food Pantry during different times of the year. So Proctor, this has been a longstanding tradition, and we identify an item for each grade level to bring in. So it might be grade one might be bringing in, you know, canned beans, you know, it could be anything. We get a list from the North Borough Food Pantry of what's really needed, and we target those items as part of the Turkey Trot. So they run during their PE classes, and they bring in those donations. We have parents that come in, and we have some activities as they're running, so it's not just strictly running around the gym.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
And thank you so much for attending tonight, Mrs. Sears. You're welcome to leave for the night.
Thank you.
You can also stay.
You can also stay, but no judgment. You leave. Next, and the agenda is Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services, and she's going to present for the Student Support Services programmatic.
Oh, program. Yes. Hello, everybody. Tonight, I'm happy to present our Student Support Services programs across our district. And some of this will also cover Algonquin because your students will eventually, the North, our students will eventually be there as well. So next slide.
So can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Marie, so I think as a district, we're very fortunate to have a continuum of services from our Student Support Services Department. They do an outstanding job thinking about the needs of all of our students. And I think this is where we benefit from a partnership with the community of South Borough, Algonquin, and North Borough. And all three entities and organizations, really, students really benefit from having a continuum of services across those three districts.
And I'll talk about those individually with the locations for all the programs as well. So here is just a very top view of our organization. We have three Assistant Directors of Student Support. So Kate Clark is at the high school. Deblamue is a North Borough. And South Borough, K through eight, as well as Helene Desjardins. They split schools, and there's specific schools that they're assigned to as their primary. And then we have Jennifer Henry as our early childhood administrator, and she's housed at the Finn School, and our North Borough and South Borough students attend there. We also have team leaders, and we have three of them currently. One is Michelle Moody, and she's our South Borough Team Chair. We've got Matt Burton-Azzi, who does North Borough K through five, and Kristin O'Brien, who is at Melican Middle School. We also have administrative assistants. Sandy Burgess is in the central office. And then we have four admin assistants that handle all of the paperwork, all the IEP processing, and Medicare, Medicaid, and other programs, Circuit Breaker, all of those things. And so there's Ellen Farrar Tobin here in North Borough. Lisa Sauciers in South Borough. Danielle Velella is at the high school, and Carrie Crichton is the preschool person. Okay, next slide. So as Greg mentioned, we do provide a continuum of services in Student Support Services over our 10 buildings. And within there, we have eight specialized programs. Locations may change based on student need, and I will talk about that as we go through. But our programs cover pre-K through age 21. Next slide. So the first one I want to talk about is the Language-Based Learning Disabilities Program. And that program is, it provides opportunities for thinking critically, solving problems, and engaging intellectual curiosity for students with specific learning disabilities who require small-group instruction with a special ed staff or a combination of general ed and special education staff. There's different ways that they access their learning. They're either sub-separate for their certain academic programs, especially in ELA and in reading. And then some of them also spend time in mathematics or science or social studies in small group, but they can also be included in the classrooms based on need, and most of our students are. It's really more focused on the reading and the, in the ELA skills that a student needs to be successful across academic areas. So that's really the focus of the program. It focuses on spelling skills, decoding, written language, mathematics, executive functioning skills as it relates to student success in the classroom, and expressive language. Some of the specialized instruction methodologies that we use really are based on student need. So that, some of the programs we use are Wilson, Orton-Gillingham, the Lynda Mubell Lips Program. We use Lynda Mubell Visualizing and Verbalizing Program, which helps students write more creatively. We have Empower for Writing, Framing Your Thoughts. And we have Thinking Maps as one example of an executive functioning organizational program that the students use. It is a direct systematic multisensory structured language teaching approach for all of those programs that I mentioned. And the instructions focused on attainment of decoding and encoding skills, oral reading fluency, comprehension skills, writing skills, and vocabulary development. And those are located currently at the Z School Elementary, for the elementary, at the middle school, at Melican and Trotier, and at the high school right now. Next slide. The next program is the Transitional Learning Center Program. And this program is designed for students needing more intensive academic, social, and communication support. It can be, again, delivered in various models with full inclusion, partial inclusion, and sub-separate classes for the various academic areas. The skill levels of the students have varying disabilities in the areas of intellectual, autism, neurological, and communication. Their individual needs are addressed through their IEP goals and objectives and with a focus on participating in the general education classes, again, least restrictive environment maximum extent possible in those, in the general ed setting. And the core content areas that are a focus are reading, English Language Arts, math, science, and social studies. And the students are taught at their instructional level, and again, through various models of instruction. And currently, those programs exist at the middle school here at Melican and at the high school. Next slide. Okay, this, everybody always says or asks, "What does CASL stand for?" And it's not our CASL, SEL program. This is a program that is based on the work, the acronym of the program was inspired by Emily Rubin, who invented the CERTS program model, and it's based on social communication, emotional regulation, and transactional supports. So we came up with this acronym that really modeled the CERTS program, and we did a lot of professional development with her and the CERTS model when it was first introduced to our district many years ago. It's an intensive specialized instructional model, and it's across the school day, and it supports learning challenges of students typically on the autism spectrum. And it's very closely adhered to the principles of Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA. The instruction is mostly provided in a sub-separate space, but there's also opportunities for the general education classroom for certain instruction that students can access, as well as the small-group sub-separates are either one-to-one or small-group instruction. Again, principles of ABA, and it's embedded systematic teaching. We use the ACE curriculum, which is a program that allows us to develop certain standards for students and measure them across the school year. And it's also a program that captures data, so it's easily accessible and understood by parents when we have clinic meetings and progress meetings. Data is usually shared at clinic meetings monthly using the ACE program tools. The areas of focus are on functional communication, again, activities of daily living, academics, augmentative assistive communication, which is AAC. That's an alternative means of communication for students that are nonverbal or need help with their communication. So it's a tool, it's a technology tool that allows them to communicate with their peers and their teachers and in the community. They take those devices home with them. And then we also, for the older students, we focus on vocational skills, and everybody focuses on the communication skills and the social pragmatic skills. The program uses a team approach to service delivery, so we have a staff, a lead special education teacher, ESPs, our educational support professionals. The speech and language therapist is very closely associated and needed into the program, as well as our physical therapist and an occupational therapist. So it really is a team approach. Those programs are supported by a board-certified behavior analyst and the assistive technology specialist and an AAC consultant for the assistive, the augmentative assistive communication devices and the school psychologist. So it's really a wraparound program that really provides a lot of intense support during the school day. And again, this program currently exists in our elementary schools at Finn, Peaslee, Proctor, and Z, and also at the middle school at Trotier. Occasionally, the location of the programs will shift based on student need and, you know, where they're, the ages of the program and the grades, where the students are. Next slide. This Transitional Learning Center Program 2 is exclusively at the high school, and it is exactly the CASL program at the high school. So it models that, the same things I had already talked about. Next slide is our Therapeutic Learning Program, and that's currently located at Lincoln Street School. And it provides therapeutic supports for students with emotional and/or social disabilities. And they're in that, it's a more restrictive program. And they're in that, it's a more restrictive program and it's for students that have, that their needs impact their ability to access the curriculum without the therapeutic supports. It's designed to build a trusting relationship between the student and the TLP team and there's a, so that that team really has an in-depth understanding of their current academic and social emotional needs. So they work with the general education teachers, they work within their classroom when they do one-to-one or small group instruction. Most of those students are fully included, mostly fully included for their academics, but they do receive the therapeutic supports back in the space. And some students may require some academic small group instruction in the TLP. It really depends, it's individual and again, based on their IEP goals and objectives. They access the grade level curriculum and with the appropriate modifications and accommodations and also have the therapeutic supports. The TLP team consists of a social worker, a special education teacher, the general education teacher associated with the grade level for the students, and educational support professionals. And that program is also supported by our district-level BCBA's, Occupational Therapist and Speech and Language Pathologist. Next slide. We also have two therapeutic models at both middle schools, so at Trotter and at Melican. And again, it's a program that supports the therapeutic needs of our students and they work explicitly on social emotional skills, counseling, emotional regulation, and that's all an integral part of the program. These students are students who are typically either coming, there's two types of students that are serviced in this, these two programs. Students who are home for a period of time and come back to school or returning from the hospital and need some time to catch up before they go back to class. And then it also services our students on IEPs who need those more therapeutic intensive supports. Okay, next slide. Then we have our therapeutic program at the high school and it's called RISE and it's an acronym for Reaching Individualized Success Educationally. It's, it is again, a more restrictive environment, however, a lot of the students are included in the general ed setting. And a lot of the classes are taught, are all, actually, all of the academic courses are taught by a general ed teacher paired with a special education teacher. But it's small group, smaller group instruction. They're not in a class with 15 students, they may be in a class with four or five students. And again, these are students whose social emotional challenges impede their ability to succeed in an inclusion setting full-time without the therapeutic supports. There is, again, content-specific general education teachers and special education teachers. And they're supported by a school adjustment counselor who works exclusively in that program. And they, that school adjustment counselor also works with the family and their outside providers with the goal of returning students to the general ed setting whenever possible. So it's more flexible and it's more dynamic depending on student need. Next slide. Then we have our Community Access Program, known as CAP, at the high school. And this is for students who have a full-day program, postgraduate, Ongongwun students, and their ages are between 18 and up to the age of 22. They have varying disabilities and, but not limited to intellectual autism, neurological, and communication. There's a lot of training that's provided for supported employment and independent living. And the goal of this program is to provide direct hands-on specialized instruction to make progress toward transitioning successfully from the public school to adult life. The emphasis is on functional skills in the area of vocational employment, social skills, communication, health and self-care, functional daily life skills, leisure, and community access. And enrollment in this program occurs through the IEP team process. Again, that's exclusively at the high school. And I can talk about some other activities that they do in this program when we get to, when we get to the extracurricular activities that the students access. The next and last program is our New England Center for Children Partner Classroom. That is currently at the high school and it's moved with our students as we've replaced this classroom model with our CASL programs. So it's, right now, it's an intensive instructional classroom based on the principles of ABA. And it's established and operated by NECC. We do provide the ESP support in that classroom, but it is run by a NECC teacher and they have their own BCBA that supports that program. And it's, the services are provided for students currently in grades nine through 12. The diagnosis is, for that program is autism and related disabilities. And it's a systematic individualized instruction in an intensive learning environment. It also uses the ACE curriculum to work with the students on their academics. And it provides frequent hands-on practice in a variety of settings, in their homeroom, in the inclusion setting, and out in the community. The program focuses on assisting students to generalize academic, social communication language, vocational health, safety, and adaptive skills. And it's applied toward relevant content. The enrollment in this classroom occurs through the IEP team process as well. And the CAP program additionally involves adult agencies as the students are ready to enter the adult world. So we partner with the Department of Mental Health, the DSS, DDS. We have a program through MRC, why can't I think about it? MRC, the Mass Rehab Commission, that helps students vocationally to get jobs and to work on really interviewing skills and the things that they need to be successful out there. Then, our last slide is about our extracurricular activities in our schools. So every school provides many activities available to all students during, after the school day in elementary through high school and you always get information on that. We also have additional extracurricular activities that are available. Every year, we do our Titan Games, which is grades K through age 21. And that's done at the high school and it kind of has replaced our Special Olympics that we used to attend in Framingham. Parents really enjoy the, this model of activity for the students and the students love it and it's the best day of the year. And then we have Project Unify at Trotter. And that program partners peers and they do things like Titan, they do, they help with the Titan Games, they do tie-dye parties, they do polar plunge, holiday parties. And they, it's really a social activity for our students at Trotter. And that, at the high school, we have Best Buddies Program and we have Unified Art, Singing, Deca, Basketball, and Track. We have Color Guard. And then there's a program that we partner with, with an outside organization called Thrive. And that provides after-school social groups to our students. And it's our high school students and students as they are nearing adulthood. It's for students with developmental or intellectual disabilities and it runs at the high school on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And they're grouped by age. So that's a lot of information. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. This was so informative. There was so many things. I had no idea there was this many programs of all that you were doing.
Did you memorize all the acronyms?
I got them all down so I can study them all up here. But thank you so much. We appreciate all the time and effort that you put in our district on a daily basis, but then to actually put in extra time to do these presentations for us and the community, it's much appreciated. So thank you so much. I'm gonna, once again, I'm gonna go down the line and I'll just say, Bryce, do you have any questions?
More just kind of a clarifying point for the public is if, and this is mostly kind of K through five, is that if any school does not have one of these programs running in it, a student who would have attended that school has access to that program at another location?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
And so that's, that development goes through the IEP team and local administration to decide, like, yes, it's not at either Lincoln or Proctor, but it is available here and that student, well, it would have access to that.
Sure. Yes. And that's what Greg was talking about, that we do provide the continuum of services and at certain schools, but all students are welcome if they qualify through the IEP team process.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Erin? Just had a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the, let me get the acronym right, LBLZ.
Yes.
Is at Z. Do we have an Orton-Gillingham certified instructor there providing the?
Yes.
Okay. So any students would?
Yes, but it's not only Orton-Gillingham because some students require Wilson, some students require Lynda Mubell Lips. It really depends on their learning style and that, they receive all of that depending on their need.
Okay.
So those are the various programs that they, that we use to do that multisensory systematic approach to reading instruction.
Okay. And then a quick question about the CASL program. You mentioned, and I think another program as well, the ABA is supported. Do we have an ABA specialist in the district?
We have BCBA's, which is, ABA is Applied Behavioral Analysis.
Right.
And our teachers in those programs are experts in delivering ABA, the Applied Behavioral Analysis Approach, but they're supported by our district-level BCBA's.
Okay. So are they pushing into those classrooms at certain times throughout the week or the day or?
Yes. And they're all, our BCBA's, some of them are actually on students' IEPs so that they, for a certain number of hours a week, and they also provide it individual as well as to the group.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Kelly. I have several questions. The first one, I'm trying to give you the order of your slides. The first one was when you had the chart of the hierarchy. You had Assistant Director and Team Leaders. Is that also the Team Leader, is like, is that the Team Chair?
Yes.
It is. So who would be going to the IEP meetings, more or less the REA Vows and the Vows?
No. The Team Leads. So Michelle Moody, Matt Bertinazzi, and Kristen O'Brien.
So they're, they're running the meetings?
Yes.
Stand there. Okay, thank you. Going next then to the TLCP.
Okay.
I love the acronyms, I didn't write it down fast enough. The location you have there for?
TLC?
TLCP.
Well, TLC.
That one, okay. TLC.
Oh, oh, TLCP, okay.
TLCP in there, I forgot that one. The location you have for that one is at the middle school. Is that because of the age or do we have, all the other ones had services in these programs at the elementary level also? This was the only one that did not have elementary. Is it just age development?
No.
Do we have elementary students coming here then to middle school for that program?
Yes.
We do.
But the model is different, so it's developmentally appropriate to deliver those services in middle school in the way we do. In the elementary schools, it's delivered a little bit differently. They still do the small group, they still do all, but it's not an official Transitional Learning Center. It's not a, but if we had a need, if we certainly had a group of students that needed it, we would create one at the elementary school.
Do you know how many elementary students we have coming to Melican for that program?
Right now, it's maybe two, two students.
So do they still follow then the middle school's schedule and do they come in on the middle, middle school buses?
Yes.
And?
Some do, some may take vans, specialized transportation if it's in their IEP. Some come during, on a regular yellow school bus, some are dropped off by parents, like all of our kids.
Okay.
But it is the regular school day. They follow the schedule for their age group, so a sixth grader would follow the sixth grade schedule, seventh would follow seventh, eighth would follow eighth. And they have a special education teacher and aides in that program to support it. So some students may require small group math, let's say. So they do it in the Transitional Learning Center Program, but during times where math is already in the school for that grade level. So sometimes they even participate in the general ed classroom when the activities are appropriate for that student.
I was more concerned if we had a seven-year-old who was coming into the middle school setting for this program.
We would never do that.
You would. Well, that makes, I said, do we have elementary students coming into the middle school?
Oh, I thought you meant from, from fifth grade to sixth grade.
No, no.
No, we do not. No, we do not. No, that would be serviced at the elementary schools.
That would be.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that, for that clarification. And on the CAP program, because it's ages 18 to 22, are we still regulated, we have to supply transportation for that? And would they come on the school bus or if they need special vans or something, we provide that for those CAP students then coming to?
Both, yes. Some take the yellow school bus and some take specialized transportation.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I was just pleased by all these different programs that have come since Special Ed Program was first, back in the 60s, that was just signed into legislation. So it's wonderful about honing in on how we can service these children's better. Because of the richness of these programs, and one thing that I didn't hear was collaboration with other districts' collaboratives. Do we allow any other, do you work with coll, I know you, I know you have, but I just wanted to make sure you got airtime to talk about the collaboratives also.
Yes, we do. Are you talking about working with them?
Tuitioning, tuitioning in students.
Tuitioning in from other districts.
Students from other districts.
We do, yes. And we actually have some situations this year.
Okay.
Yes, we do. If we have room. We have a lot of students who require these programs and certainly we want to make sure that we keep our programs within DESI guidelines. But if we do have room, we do offer it out to surrounding districts.
Yeah, because I know in the past we'd always talk about collaboratives with other districts so that we can share our resources and if we have one or two students that have special needs that can fit into the richness of our programs, we could maybe have them go to, you know, to West Borough School District or, you know, some other district near us.
Yes.
You do?
Vice versa.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation, Marie. I think in our almost five years, I think this was the first time we've heard all of this together in one presentation. So it was really helpful just to sort of see where everything happens and what schools, what it's called, so thank you for that. I had a question about extracurriculars for students. I'm specifically thinking maybe about, you know, an elementary school student who might want to participate in, I don't know, like, the robotics after school. I don't know if that even exists. And during the school day, they might require one-to-one support in the classroom. Does that, does that carry with them after school?
Yes, it depends on what they require for access for extracurricular activities. So it's based on access.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a one-to-one correlation with an IEP necessarily. It's what they need for support to be successful in that extracurricular program. So we do have some ESPs go to the after-school activities with students who require it.
And so, you know, our job is financial. So financially, how does that work out? Do the ESPs get paid for those hours then through our budget?
Yes, and we, and we do projections. So we're in the process of the FY '24 budget. And we do projections about the students that might require that and looking at the activities that they have accessed in the past. And we do projections based on that.
Okay. Thank you. And currently in the district, are there any unified gym classes, PE classes offered to any students?
There's unified basketball and there's unified track. Those are after school.
After school?
Yes. There's a whole unified program at the high school that's pretty, pretty good. And it's grown. And they're also looking at other areas of sports as well as art. So art was added last year, I think. Singing was, was two years ago.
That's great.
And then basketball and track. Track was the first thing that they started and Deca was about three or four years ago.
That's great. Excellent. I do know of a district that just started Unified Middle School Gym this year. I think it's the first in the state. So if you want to talk, let me know.
Great.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. My only question, it was kind of like along the lines of what Bryce was saying and it was moreover of, so if there was a program that's happening at Melican and it's not at Trotter, the Trotter kids would come to Melican and vice versa for the program happening at Trotter.
Yes.
If there's Melican, they would go.
And that happens now.
Yeah.
With our, yes.
So that was, that was my only thing, but it was great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time and.
Thank you, Marie.
Could you just make a couple of comments? First of all, I think it's, it's great work. This has been a long journey for the district creating these programs and meeting the needs of all of our students. We have the responsibility as public education system to make sure that we meet the needs of all students. I think sometimes it's lost that without these types of programs, students, many students would have to find, we'd have to find a program outside of our district, which isn't always in the best interest of our students. So whenever we create programs where students are with their peer group in their communities, I think it serves us well and it serves the students well. So behind all, this is also a financial commitment that we've made as a district to deploy resources to create these programs. But without that, we would be spending a tremendous amount of money on sending our students to programs like these outside of our district.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just kind of say back, like the reflection back that we are kind of in this space where it is advantageous to us not only from a community standpoint, but from a financial standpoint to fold these, these environments into the district in a way that is supportive of the community, the students that we have here, but also aware that the reduction in overall costs to having to send out of district is also not an insignificant one. And so I would just say like, when we talk about the financials around these programs, keeping that context in mind is important for us.
For, that just, so these programs, you say educating all of the students, I think. Do we lose students for, out of placement for like gifted reason? Like kids that need to go? Or is there not a place that they would go that's like a public type thing? It would just be parents would choose to take their children and go to a private?
Correct.
And there, do they have schools that have like gifted programming around our district?
So gifted education does not fall under our, you know, special education, student support services.
Yeah.
And I think it's probably another conversation around, you know, how many, how many families are seeking either private placement as a result of not feeling we're not meeting their needs. And I think that's a whole conversation around the continuum of learner we have and making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our learners along that continuum.
Thank you. All right. Seeing the others.
Thank you. Thanks, Marie. Thanks, Marie.
Moving on, we have legislative update. At the time of this report, there was none.
So no real updates at this time. I think the, the, what I communicated at the last meeting around the update rate of 14% for out-of-district placement is something that we continue to advocate. And I think we are waiting for the elections to take place on next Tuesday to send our letters to our new, new delegation.
So tonight we have several grants and donations, which is amazing, to our district. We have instruments donated to the fifth grade band program and we have instruments donated to the Melikan Middle School Band Program. Do you want to say anything about?
No, I think we're just very fortunate that our community members have donated instruments, perfectly wonderful instruments for our program. And I think it reminded me, it's a great, probably untapped resource to reach out to the community and ask for these types of donations because it really benefits our kids and our music programs.
Is that how we got all of these?
I have, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I need to do some research now.
Okay.
So I will entertain any motions to accept these donations?
It's going to be a long one. I'm, I'm happy to make the motion. It will be a long motion. So I move to approve the instruments donated to the fifth grade band program, including a donation from Karen Heatherington, which is valued at $250 for a bell and snare drum kit, to the Bier family, valued at $600 for a saxophone, a cleaning kit for trumpets for a value of $19.99, and also a methods book with a value of $9.99. Also, a donation from Heidi McCurey for a donation valued at $250 of an Armstrong flute, as well as instruments donated to the Melikan Band Program. And these donations include one from Susan Dupre, valued at $300 for a trumpet, Julie Patrazek, who donated three hun, a trumpet valued at $300, Tara Kelleher, who donated a percussion kit valued at $300, and Marshall Hudson, who donated an alto sax valued at $300.
Second?
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. Any discussion?
Only discussion is will there be a letter sent out on behalf of the superintendent and chair? Wonderful donation.
Several, several letters.
Okay, yes, several letters. Right. Thank you.
And I think my comment would just be, thank you to all of these really kind and generous families. I know that some students who start a program might not have the means to rent an instrument or purchase an instrument, so this is really helpful.
Extremely helpful. Being a fifth grade parent this year and being introduced to band, I had no idea about the whole process of renting and all this stuff. And there are some instruments in their program that they did have, like certain instruments for donations and things like that, so. And now I see where they get them from. That's amazing. So we have a motion in the second. All in favor? No opposition, so we approve and we accept these donations and gratefully accept them. Thank you so much.
Old business, it's like none. Superintendent's report to the committee. And, oh, man.
Sure. So the first item for the report is enrollment. So I just, as of 10/21/2022, and I just want to make a, first a general comment. When you look at the number of classes that are capped across our four elementary schools, it is significant. In kindergarten, we have three out of four capped, in first grade, three out of four capped, in second grade, one out of four, third grade, three out of four, fourth grade, three out of four, and fifth grade, zero out of four. But again, without that class size policy and the process that we move through in terms of placing students, we'd have great variability of class sizes across our elementary schools. But it is something to keep a close eye on as we think about the FY24 budget process. At this point in time, we have an enrollment of 1,601 students, which is 10 more than the October enrollment report. I also, in your packet, have included the NESDEC enrollment projections. The NESDEC enrollment projections provide us with an overview of what enrollment will look like over the next decade. As you look at these projections, it's really important to note that four years out, their enrollment projections are fairly accurate, but as you move to six, year six through 10, they're far less accurate. And in your packet, again, is the enrollment report. And NESDEC is projecting 1,662 pre-K through eight students and our enrollment projection is 1514. So we're keeping a close eye on that right now. We move through the budget process.
Question about the enrollment for, so the, the data that's used for, for DESI to calculate chapter 70 funding, so we had, we have five extra or five less?
As of October 1.
Yeah.
So I believe the, it was five less.
Five, okay. If it were five, if it were a reverse, what happens to that? Where does that extra funding come to fund those students? Does it come from like the districts that they come from or is it just like we have to find the money to?
So it's the foundation budget enrollment, so there is a very complicated algorithm in which they calculate the rate of each student.
Yeah.
And I think depending on the student's needs and the classification of the student depends on the amount we get. But if we have students who move in after October 1, it's, it's absorbed through the typical operational budget. And this is for, this is for FY24, so these are really projections as well. So I think we're, I think, they're typically informed by that. Is that clear?
Yes. Does anybody else have any questions, Joan?
I have one question. On your superintendent's report, under enrollments, you had said that we had 10 more students that moved in just from October 1?
Correct. November.
Did, was there any one certain school or grade level this winter or is it just evenly distributed?
Evenly distributed.
That'd be a shock though, 10 new students in one month.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. And on the report, the class, the grade levels that have the yellow, is that the ones that we're watching?
Those are capped.
Capped, those are capped.
The ceiling of our class size policy.
Okay. Are there any classes we're watching?
No, I think we, because, you know, I think in, in the grade levels that I had mentioned where we have three out of four of the grades that are capped, we have, we still have space for students as they enroll.
They do.
Our enrollment, for the most part, I think, the left, this past month was not typical in receiving 10 students. Typically, we'll receive maybe one or two students a month. It remains pretty stable. So we have space.
Okay. Thanks.
So also in your packet is the FY23 monthly general fund expenditure report. And I just, before I turn it over to Becky, I just want to mention that we are watching the budget very closely. We, we are experiencing the impact of inflation. And one example is electricity costs. We are anticipating about a $75,000 increase in our electricity cost from December through the end of June. We had a three-year contract that expired in December and now we have a new rate and that $75,000 is, is the result of the new rate. That's just one example of several where we are experiencing increased costs. The other is special education transportation. Asa Valley Collaborative negotiates our transportation. Vanful, it did not finalize the contract until well after our budget was approved. And we did see a significant increase. So that is another budget driver that we were not anticipating, which is impacting the overall bottom line. And I think Becky probably can add some additional detail to those too, but we are actively monitoring our budget on a daily, weekly basis and making sure we're projecting out so that we end the fiscal year in June in a good place.
Yes, just to add on to what Greg said, I've been spending a lot of time, specifically probably with Marie the most, but with many of the departments, looking at some of our available grants and trying to utilize those funds to help to supplement the FY23 budget. We're also awaiting, DESI has not yet released our circuit breaker yet for the fiscal year 23. And usually we would have that number by this point in the school year. It's because of the Student Opportunity Act and the addition of the transportation, I guess, that DESI is having a little bit more trouble calculating those rates. So we are hoping, we had been told, I think the end of September, it would be another month. So we are hoping to see those funds, but that's just, you know, a few things that are hanging out there right now that can add a little bit of the unknown to the FY23 budget. And as Greg said, we are seeing inflation, you know, with some of our vendors. Some of the paper continues to be one of those commodities that we're still having difficulty getting. And when we're getting it, it is at a higher price than what we had paid in the past. So it is adding a little bit of fun, I guess, to, to the budget year for fiscal year 23. But we're really, right now, we're not trending too far off from where we were last year. We do have about 280,000 remaining on the bottom line. Last year, we did have 522,000, but I feel confident that we have really encumbered a lot of those known expenses. And we continue to work and look through each line item and try to find either savings or making sure that we're setting aside the money that's needed for, to support the classrooms. Go ahead, Bryce.
Just two questions on, on the kind of purchasing systems in place. Asa Valley Collaborative is negotiating for all of Northborough, Southborough, and Algonquin for the special education, for the special needs transportation.
Yes, yes.
That is a practice that is solid for a year at a time or?
It's typically for multiple years.
And how much, how long was this latest contract negotiated?
This was for three years.
For three years?
Yes.
Okay. And are, have we previously been pretty happy with the pricing that Asa Valley had, had been able to negotiate for the districts?
Yes. I would say we have, yeah.
They're an 11-member district.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a volume and I think we, the superintendents or the board that actually approve these contracts, so we're, us as a superintendent board.
Yep.
Reviewing these very closely and making sure that we feel like we're getting the value.
Okay.
And fair contracts.
And as compared to other collaboratives, this is fairly in line with some of the price increases?
Yeah, we are, we are seeing with other collaboratives a similar pattern in terms of increased transportation costs.
Across the board.
It just, it's costing more for folks to operate transportation systems.
Okay. And then as far as even items just like paper and other, you know, items that schools frequently use, are there other purchasing groups that can be leveraged for negotiating into next budget year or are these?
I feel like I've been living in paper world for about a year now.
Well, it's not just paper, but I mean like, you know, as we're, as we're sourcing material that is used in schools.
No, we are.
What, what methods?
So we've joined multiple groups. So we previously had gone through the French River Collaborative for our paper purchasing, just as an example. We do, however, they were not able to actually obtain a good price this year and encourage districts to find other means of obtaining paper. We've joined a national collaborative, so we're able to actually purchase through Amazon. And so we've been able to get pallets of paper through them. However, I know, it's, it's amazing. However, they're actually, right now, we're not able to get pallets, like they're, they're running low. So next week, they hope to have more in stock because we're not just going to Staples and buying, or BJ's and buying one case, we're buying larger quantities. In terms of our office supplies, we do have, we can go through statewide contract, we can utilize Amazon, and then ABC has a contract with WB Mason. So we are trying to utilize everything, but we are seeing that these costs are increasing even as we, you know, sometimes you put things in the cart and then you go back and the prices increase, so.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a reality. We're all, we're all. And I would just say that in addition to some of the public sector groups, there are private sector GPOs that are entering the public market because they see, they have price advantages that some of the public sectors don't. And so I would just say that that might be worth exploring as we look to reassess.
And that's actually what this Omni Partners is, where it's, so we're participating in that and that's national. And then we also have the Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium that we work with. So I'm constantly price shopping.
Yeah.
You know, and if somebody is, is looking for something unique, we're, we're reaching out to multiple vendors to try to get the best pricing.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment too. This is a very unique time.
Yeah.
This is, you know, inflation is at a, is at a 40-year all-time high and we're seeing inflation impacting all aspects of our operation from goods and services, ticket procurement. And when we were crafting this budget, a lot changed.
Yeah.
So, so we are, we are trying to be proactive in our projections and trying to be as conservative as possible, but it is, I just want to emphasize, as, as you all, I think, experience in your own households, a very unique time in terms of, of how far the dollar goes right now.
Yeah, and I just want to say I'm appreciative of all the, you know, all the Yeah, and I just want to say I'm appreciative of all the, you know, all of the procurement efforts that you're making, kind of inside and outside the box, right? Because that's kind of what all of us are doing, and so it's great to hear you all doing that as well.
What a question. I will take a motion to accept this budget.
Yes. I move that we accept the FY 2023 budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of October 31, 2022, as stated, until August 8.
Second. I kind of heard Bryce.
You can give it to Bryce.
No, were you sorry?
Give it to him.
A motion by Joan, second. Bryce, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. All right. Next for the superintendent's report is the capital project improvement, an overview of the FY '24 draft capital plan, and I will turn it over to Keith.
Excellent, thank you, Greg. In your packet, you will find a draft of the FY '24 to FY '29 facilities capital plan report. We did have the opportunity to meet with the subcommittee, I believe it was a week and a half ago or so, to kind of review these items, got some great insight and response to some of the pieces that are here. Let me see if I can blow this up a little bit more, so. There we go. Okay. So we did have the opportunity to review some of these items in subcommittee, and as a result of that, we did work closely with facilities manager in Northborough, Bud Richardson, to come up with a priority list. I do want to thank Bud for his efforts in pulling this capital plan together. He really did look from the roof down and looked at our grounds to be thoughtful and insightful about what we are dealing with presently and then what we are going to be forecasting out for the next five years. So this does, this capital plan does highlight a lot of the items that we see. Certainly, things are unforeseen that pop up, definitely, and it is complemented nicely by a routine maintenance plan that he has also prepared, that supports this well, that kind of wraps it around. So the items here, what we did is we color-coded the priorities. The top priorities are in red, and the secondary priorities are in yellow. That doesn't mean that the others are things we can forget about and may not pop up on any given time, but certainly, this is a more comprehensive view of each school. One of the things I'd like to do is just kind of look at that priority list. I think we can focus the start of the conversation on the priority list, and then I'll be happy to go back and get into any detail on any of the items that are listed. So this is not in your packet, but here is a broken-out version of the priority list that was prepared, and it is no surprise that the Proctor roof replacement is at the top of that. Greg, do we want to mention MSBA now, or should we do that later?
Yeah, I think you can mention it.
Unfortunately, MSBA, the accelerated repair program that we put in a statement of interest for last spring, we did get the denial letter. We got the denial letter not too long ago after our committee meeting that did came in, which is not a huge surprise. It does indicate that the volume of applications they did get was very high, and the cutoff for the year of a roof is 30 years. And that has gradually gone up every year. I've been doing this job and even looking at this, you know, it started at something that 25 was the threshold, 27, and now we're up to 30 years. So it does tell you that they're not even entertaining roofs until they're 30 years old, which, you know, that would make me nervous for my own home, never mind the school. So that's something that we just have to keep in mind as we're looking at the age of our roofs and the age of our different buildings, that, you know, we try to take advantage of this grant funding, but it isn't always available as much as we would like. So that certainly, you know, continues to be at the top of the list. Second to that is the.
Can I just add a couple comments?
Yeah, please do.
I've had several conversations with town administrator John Caderar around Plan B, that this continues to be our greatest priority and need. I think the ARPA letter that the school committee had shared with the Board of Selectmen is still very appropriate. However, at that time, we asked for the difference of what we were anticipating being funded through MSBA and what we would need to make the shortfall. So I think it's probably incumbent upon the school committee to maybe draft another letter around requesting a full amount be funded through ARPA. I also had conversations with John Caderar around making sure if that's not the case, then this is a warrant article that would move forward in terms of bringing this in front of the town's voters.
Any more, any questions about the fund roof project? I will say, though, the work we've done in the last 12 months has really worked well. The drainage that we improved, the downspouts, all of that is working really well. Those improvements have made a difference, immediate difference. We also took the opportunity this fall to do some power washing, which really brightened up the Proctor school and got us to a good spot. And we are monitoring closely. We do have our facility staff on the roof, especially after we've had a couple of large rainstorms lately, and the roof has performed pretty well, pretty well. We do have the roof leaks that we've had before, they haven't gone away magically, but they're contained and controlled, and we haven't had any new ones that we're greatly worried about. But, you know, when I see rain in the forecast, I always worry, and I'm on the phone with Bud at 5:00 in the morning, so make sure that we're in good standing from the start of the school day. So Proctor roof is definitely at the top of the list as the number one priority.
I guess the good thing about not being with the MSBA is we're not now tied to their timeframe.
That's right.
So now we can kind of just, as soon as we get the funding figured out, it just kind of go right for it, right?
The MSBA process is the process, and we follow its timeline. Now it's procurement process and timeline, which is much quicker potentially, once funding's approved.
Once we figure that, yeah.
And now Becky and I working in partnership to create, you know, an invitation for bid if we ever got to that point, once we are moving forward and get a good idea of what we're going to be looking at for procurement.
So then would the ideas potentially, it would be like a warrant article type?
So I think there are a couple paths that the town can take in terms of funding this. I think ARPA and the warrant article are the two paths in my, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But I think that we'll have further conversations with the town and the select board.
Joan?
Then I think we should, as you've mentioned, Greg, is Kelly work with Greg and to redo the letter and just change to the dollar amount and send it to the Board of Selectmen, and if we have to present it to them, due to the result of the denial level that you got, letter that you got. And take that first, because I don't know when the warrant articles would be closing, probably in February?
Yeah, I mean, usually December.
December.
December, early January. And I think the good news is that the ARPA conversation at the select board level is still happening, so no decisions have been made around priorities.
And for that, I would support that we have an ARPA letter going with the new dollar amount that would be needed for the roof replacement.
As soon as possible. For their next meeting.
Second priority is on a smaller scale. If you've been to the back gym entrance of the Z School, this is a place where the concrete has kind of turned up and has been crumbling for years. We've tried a variety of different patching and things, and it just doesn't hold. With the New England winters, it just simply doesn't hold. So to give a nice, clean access, we have been partnering with the DPW potentially on a project to dig out a large portion of that area and then repin it with some good concrete slab there, so that would make it a nice transition and fully ADA compliant. So that's why we have that as the second priority for the capital plan. Let me kind of graduate down to more of a secondary list of priorities. Once again, this is, you know, we could list these in any particular order. I did, just because of the certain experience I have with these projects, the third being the Melican Middle School Pneumatics Controls, which is the air pressure system that supports the heating unit throughout the building. And that has, it's a very antiquated system. We did do some smaller repairs from the pump that's actually down in Boiler Room to only the locker room. So we spent a couple thousand dollars and only got not even a couple hundred feet, yeah, to do the necessary repairs. And if you think of it, the pneumatic system is a very thin, very thin plastic tubes that send air pressure, and very easily, they can become cracked or pinholes, and that sacrifices the air pressure that ultimately gets to the top. Fortunately, Bud Richardson is very talented at the pneumatic systems, and we're able to sustain pressure throughout, but it would be great to do some gradual repairs to that system over the next couple of years to make sure that we're continuing to keep it good and not overrunning our motor. So that's why that would be number three. The fourth is at the Peaslee School, the sewage and drainage, and that's something that we are, we really like to explore deeper. That's why it doesn't have a dollar value added to it yet. We don't, we know that we do have some drainage and sewer issues that go off from the cafeteria out underneath the pavement there. From time to time, we do get backups that are controlled to maintain, and we do the basic plumbing services to those areas, and we haven't had any majors, but it's one of those things, with such an older building, you don't know what you get until you actually either do some digging or some higher technology like scoping of the area to really know what we have. If there is a severed pipe, if there's a crumbled pipe, you know, what can we do with it, if anything? So we really don't know what it is. We just know at times, we do have some backups that we have to control and be careful with. So that would be something I'd like to explore. The fifth is, really would benefit all of our schools because we would be able to share equipment between them, but really looking to getting a ride-on floor scrubber for here at Melican that would be able to get to all three floors. That would really just help the efficiency. There's a lot of square footage in here that we'd like to clean with greater frequency, and if we would have a ride-on floor scrubber, that would really improve that. And then therefore, the different machines we would have, we would share with the other buildings, which would improve the efficiency across the board. That is why it's not just an item for Melican, it would really be a benefit to all the schools or most of the schools. And the six and seven here are at the Melican Middle School, really looking forward and down the road, and this is the work I really appreciate from Bud and thinking ahead, is our domestic hot water system here at, at Melican is starting to show its age. Really wanting to explore options there, certainly with efficiency, and make sure that we have a system that can keep up with the demand. Right now, we don't feel that that system is overwhelmed by any stretch, but it's one of those things that's getting up in age, and we want to look to a future upgrade. That's why it's out more towards '25 and potentially '26. And then the final one is the LED upgrades. Northborough has recently become a green community, really partnering with the town of the options there, and we've identified Melican as a place where we'd like to do an LED lighting upgrade. We have done this at the Z School most recently, at the high school as well, and a few of the schools in Southborough, actually, all the schools in Southborough, I believe, have gone through it, and it really does help the overall environment of the building and get some high-level controls on the lighting system, and that would be something we would benefit from here at Melican. So that does round up the top seven. I'd be happy to answer any questions like that, or we can go back to the complete plan and go into greater detail. So I'm happy to take your lead on this. Is there anything else to add, Greg?
No, I just, I do want to make one change on the information that we provided you in the packet. We did have a chance to speak with John Caderar and Scott Sharpentier, and under the Melican Middle School tennis court resurfacing and fencing in FY '25, we had listed $100,000. They have a much more accurate quote, which is $242,000. So if you vote this tonight, we'd like to just make sure that.
That amendment.
And the plan you vote.
And why is it that big of a difference? Is it, was it, they, we just kind of?
They actually had.
They actually had it, like?
Yeah.
They just had a more recent quote.
Okay. So it was like an older number that we were going off of?
It was. It was about two to three years.
Things going up.
Correct. And the scope of it as well. I think we didn't have as significant as a scope as they're proposing versus the analysis of the space. We just didn't do that level of detail work back, you know, three, four years ago. So now with this updated quote, it does give it a better scope of what they would like to get accomplished.
Lauren?
Thank you, this was very helpful. I'm curious about the LED lighting upgrade. I know that we were talking about our increased electricity costs, so pending implementation of new LED lighting, would this help with our electricity costs at all?
It wouldn't be an immediate, it wouldn't be like going from an incandescent bulb to an LED bulb at your house where you can get an immediate savings, because these are programs that are built in through like national grid, and they do have a loan attached to them. So it's not like you're just getting for free, you know, $200,000 worth of equipment and installation. That's offset by the savings that you get in the beginning. But over time, once that loan is paid down through general usage and we don't have to do anything else, we then see the savings. So right now, I would say like, you know, Trotter had theirs done five years ago. We're starting to see some of that savings now.
Okay.
Granted, the electricity prices are going up, so it's not 100%, but at least it's something.
Thank you. And then when you were talking about the Z rear entrance walkway.
Yes.
And partnering with DPW.
Yes.
Did we partner for Melican last year for repaving? Was that last year or two years ago?
Two.
Yeah, so we did the ramp, the access ramps. And the seal coating and crack sealing.
Yep.
As well as the back walkway.
The back walkway? Okay.
The pine grove.
And did that help us with cost savings working with the town?
100%.
That's great.
And we would love to see us be able, I mean, we'll have to speak with Scott Sharpentier and see how we can work it in, but I'd like to explore that with the, you know, committee's consent and move forward, yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Those are mine.
A follow-up to Lauren's on the walkway in the back of Melican. That was really bad. I think we had a walkthrough with capital projects, and that was like three years ago, before COVID. Were they able to take all those routes and make it safe? It's being used by everybody, I think even the neighborhood uses.
That's right. There's a lot of foot traffic there, and they were, they were successful.
They were.
They were. It looks great now, you know, will it last 50 years? I don't know, but, you know, it looks great now, and they did do some nice preparation for the space to make sure that it is sustainable for a long time.
Excellent neighbors, you said, for the walk-in and the dogs.
Absolutely. Yeah, we want access for all, and that, you know, and you saw it probably at its worst, and it was tricky.
Oh, yeah. It was. It was bad. Okay, thank you very much.
You don't want to go out there in the dark, it's a little tricky.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Erin, Bryce?
I think my only quick question is, I see for Z, the roof replacement is also there for fiscal year '25. Do we know if that roof is going to meet the 30-year?
So initial, so our initial thinking is it's older than Proctor.
Okay.
More likely to meet the age criterion. However, that's a variable that changes depending. But our thinking is, if we can move forward with the Proctor roof, fund that through whatever means that the town deems appropriate, then our next priority for the accelerated repair project will be the Z roof, which is more likely to qualify than Proctor.
Okay.
That's it.
Erin asked the question, right? I'll take that to read.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Northborough Public Schools FY 2024 to FY 2029 facilities capital plan draft with one correction on page two of the Melican Middle School for the tennis court resurfacing and fencing for FY '25, that the number from 100,000 be changed to 242,000.
Second. Motion by Joan, seconded by Erin. Any other discussion? Lauren?
Just want to clarify, so any capital projects are funded not from our operational budget, but typically through warrant articles, except I know.
Or free cash.
Or free cash, or in some cases, well, one-time-only ARPA.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Great, thank you.
What a generous donation like a saxophone.
Yeah, exactly.
Got to be nice.
Any wouldn't have liked to donate a roof to us, we gladly accept it.
That was, I was looting to.
See, we will gladly accept any roof.
A lot of alto saxophones.
Any roof.
Serenade, you would, musical instrument.
We will take it. No other discussion? All in favor? Yanamess, thank you so much.
Thank you.
While we're on this, I'm not sure if this is, we're usually do it, but tours of the school?
Yeah, so as we were speaking, I do need to schedule a joint select board, school committee tour of a couple of our facilities.
Yeah.
And I have not done that yet, and I will endeavor to do that in the next.
Next month.
Several weeks. And I think it's really important for people to get into our buildings and see our facilities.
Yeah. Can we pick which ones?
Yeah, I think definitely.
Let's pick the.
Peaslee.
Yeah, Peaslee for sure.
Peaslee.
Maybe Proctor after a rainstorm. I'm just kidding.
I think the last, the last tour, we went to Melican, and we went to Lincoln.
Yeah.
And I think we looked at the Proctor metal roof, and that was.
Yeah, we did. We've done. We've done ZO. I don't think we've done Peaslee.
I think if we go to Peaslee in Z, because I think it would be good for folks to see the Z roof, the back walkway.
Because I remember we went to Z because we saw the Z boiler.
The Z boiler.
Forgot about that.
I forgot about that.
So I will work with John Cadear in scheduling that tour in the next several weeks.
Would that usually be on a Saturday?
I think it was after school. I feel like we've done.
I know, but it was lighter longer. It's gonna, I mean, if we want to see some of these things, it's gonna, you know, daylight savings time coming.
Saturday as it is.
It should be in the daylight.
It should be in the daylight.
Fair enough. I'll look at our schedules.
All right.
So.
Budget goals.
Yeah, so also in your packet is the, your budget goal continuation of the discussion for budget goals for FY '24.
Okay, so we have all given input in writing. I submitted it. Did you get the kind of the revision? So what I'm thinking is how we can do it is we can kind of look at those and kind of accept them as we go down the list and kind of work down from top to bottom. Does that sound like a?
Yeah.
Good decision? Okay. So let me pull up that one. Okay, so the input we have is the Northborough School Committee is committed to providing excellent education possibilities to the children of the town, comma, and support strike of the teaching staff and lowest possibility cost to taxpayers. So anybody object to that change? The next suggestion is putting a link to the Vision 2026 strategic plan. I thought that that would be helpful to have it, so people can see that. Then instead of having a colon, change it to a period. And I think the reason behind that, if I'm not correct, Joan, is because we're kind of doing the, that's kind of just like the opening paragraph, and then you have the thing. You were the one who made the suggestion, so that's why. Is that, is that what your reasoning was behind it to make change the colon to a period?
Yeah, because I just saw that as a separate paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody's on board with that?
Yes.
For the recruitment, maintain and support high-quality staff. Changing the letter A before AMAP versus A interventionist. No objections to that. The third bullet, the suggestion was to change, instead of create and implement, change it to reestablish, because this is something that we've had in previous years, and it was removed from the school, but brought back. But my question is, was it ever in the fifth grade? Was it in fifth grader, fifth grade?
It used to be at the elementary schools.
At the elementary schools, in the straight. Oh, starting in third grade?
Fourth. Third to fourth. Yeah.
Okay.
So you want to check, but I just thought, that was my suggest, that was my edit, because sometimes, you know, we've taken things away and said, okay, we're not going to create something brand-new. It's like, okay, we took this out when it was budget and our constraints, and now we'd like to reestablish. But you may want to check, just in.
No.
Erin.
Erin was a student.
She was saying, I played the violin in Peaslee. It wasn't pretty, but I did it. And I know my son played the violin in Peaslee. So that was really, really sad.
It was a long time ago.
It was data. It was there.
You have to go in the archives to see.
So there is a question around the whole backstory of the strings and bringing it back, partly because Bryce wasn't on the committee yet. I don't even know, Erin, if you were a full member when the presentation was done or not. But we did put the thing. So my understanding is that Melican does not have a program, a strings program right now. So the idea behind reestablishing the strings program is we're going to start, we would start it in fifth grade next year, then the following year, it would be fifth and sixth, and then the following year, fifth, sixth, seventh, and then the following year, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. Is that, is that what the?
That's my understanding.
Can I just make a comment too? So Dr. Reinhardt is meeting with Becky Matarra and talking about what will it take and what do they recommend as the music department to kind of move this forward? So I think the actual implementation of plan, it will be discussed.
Might vary.
It will be mapped out. So it could be any of those options, but we want to give our music department a chance to kind of weigh in and think about how to move forward.
Well, I think one of the points is kind of what my mindset is, and I think Bryce's too, is kind of like, why start something in fifth grade if they can't carry it on after that? Like, does it make sense if it's just going to be a fifth grade? And then they get the balling that you don't, you can't play anymore, or at least not in the school. So it's kind of like, what's the point of it? Like, we're going to be, obviously putting in resources for this. And does it make sense to do that if it's not going to be something that's going to be able to carry on?
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah. That was kind of, which, working at it from which angle to make sure that there's continuity and the sustainability of the music program, but also kind of Greg's point, you know, what resources are currently available to us in the music departments at those schools? And what are those teachers really interested in bringing to the community awareness?
So we're all on board with having that bullet and just say, reestablish fifth-grade strings program. Okay. No thumbs down. Create a maintenance and grounds position. Just clarification, is that for K through eight? So is that the idea? So it would be K through eight. Should we specify that?
Is that just one position for the five buildings? And that was my edit, because everything else said where these people were going to be placed, where these positions were going to be. And then it just, that didn't say it. So I think.
Yeah, and I think, Keith, do you want to give a little history on?
Sure. So when Bud Richardson was appointed to the position of facilities manager, he vacated the assistant head custodian at Melican, which was the maintenance position for the district. And that position has never been restored. That happened right at the beginning of COVID, if you recall. So that was, you know, going about two and a half years ago, that position has been vacated. We were able to support through some cleaning support in the buildings, specifically here at Melican, but that maintenance piece, you know, Bud is, you know, fulfilling a couple of roles right now. It would be great to get him that maintenance support.
So, Kelly? So instead of create, it's not really a new position, that's a restoring.
Well, it's a grounds position.
Correct.
Different than the maintenance position.
We're going to be, that's the history of it. The future of it will be like what Greg said. It will be more of a maintenance and grounds position than just an assistant head custodian, although that's what Bud used to do.
Okay. So we still keep the word create in there?
Great, yeah. Because that would be more accurate, I believe.
So since that was my edit, I would even put create a K to eight maintenance and grounds position, to be specific.
That works for me. Yeah.
Bryce, I saw your hand up, valve that discussion.
My wheels are spinning on how a person does grounds and maintenance at five schools.
Let's go for.
One day at a time.
Well, I think it's reasonable for us to have a clear set of expectations when it comes to setting that. And so I don't, off the top of my head, I have a heart.
Unless it's something that it's like creating one this year and potentially more in the future.
You know, the calendar, the months of the year, that in winter, you know, they're not shoveling snow every, you know, so they're inside, maybe doing some more maintenance. But during the seasons, you know.
But yeah, I'm just even like having to mow.
Yeah, it would not, it would be a complement to what we do now. A lot of our head custodians have a lot of outdoor duties, mowing.
So it's taking that a little bit off their plates.
A little of the bulk, yes. Utilizing some of the town resources whenever possible to get the leak back here.
Just thinking of like our campuses and like.
There's a lot of acreage to be covered. Yeah, your point's well taken and appreciated. I'm glad that was in a public meeting. So yes, a lot of, a lot of that type of stuff. It would be really a compliment between Bud Richardson, the head custodians, and this new person to divide it all up and, you know, get the work done.
I think the challenge is, and the frustration is, that it's not being done, you know, to the degree we need it to be done. That many of our schools could, the grounds could look better and could take more attention. And I think adding this position would, would really help and make a difference.
Certainly not. Arguing against the beautification of our spaces.
So we're going to create a K through eight maintenance and grounds position.
That looks good.
All right. The next bullet, add a special education team chairs person, strike at the, and put the team chairs, chairperson for elementary and middle school levels.
Sounds good.
The next is an added bullet. This is a combination bullet from Erin and myself. We, later on bullets, we've talked about replacing technology things. We've talked about previous meetings, we've talked about adding tech people to the buildings. And so I think with all of the increase of technology in the buildings and things, it seems like there's always a need for the extra support with the technology. So we're, we're kind of wondering, is, do we need more technology people in the building base?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if you, and again, some of it is just geography, that you have five buildings and it's hard for.
One person.
One person to be in multiple schools. And when teachers need tech support, it's usually just in time. It's not, I'll be there on Tuesday. So I think the addition of tech support is, should be a budget priority. I think if you ask teachers, I think they would agree. The question I have is, what's the next level of increase? But that, those conversations can take place during the budget process.
What's the next level?
You know, do you have one person at each building?
Okay.
You have one person shared between two buildings.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that was one of the things. So that's why for, so Erin was saying she wanted to add tech educator and, or a tech support. My, my kind of edit to it was adding a daily presence, kind of putting it that way. So then that way, it doesn't mean it's necessarily like one person. So it could be, it could be a matter of, you know, maybe one person, but adding like two hours at each school on a daily basis. So then at least, again, there's more of a presence, and somebody's not waiting a week before they're seeing this.
And I think it's two-sided. And I think we heard a little bit from Alana tonight, is not only support for the staff who, I mean, so much, even starting with kindergarten up, is, there's so much tech more than we've ever had. It's not going away, and it's probably just going to increase that these, you know, the teachers, the staff need the support when things are not going right, because they're not tech specialists and they don't know how to handle it. And then they get stuck and scrap a whole lesson that they just planned. But also, you know, just hearing Alana talk about the makey makey. Like, how amazing that was for that text, one tech specialist to be in every classroom and doing this. And, you know, the goal is once a month. Like, imagine if that could be so much more, you know? Everything is so tech-driven now that, you know, it would be so great if they could be twice a month, three times a month, you know? So it's two-sided. It's really support for the staff and the students who are having trouble with all these devices, and also providing that education piece that seemed, I mean, she had such great things to say about that. And it's kind of sad to think that the goal is, you know, maybe once a month, where, you know, I mean, tech is just everywhere.
You know, with the FY '23 budget, that position was restored, because we used to have that position. So now we have two instructional technology specialists, one at the middle school and one shared across four elementary schools.
Right.
You know, I would also support making that a budget priority, you know, increase instructional technology specialists and IT support, because they go hand in hand.
Yeah, they truly do.
So, so I think we're all on board in having that be a bullet, correct? So it's just a matter of what we want to say. So do we want to say, and I'll turn to you, because you can, so do we want to say add tech specialist?
So I think if we, I don't know what.
So right now, the way that I've kind of written it, it says add tech educator slash specialist to create a daily presence at all elementary and middle schools.
So we could say increase instructional technology support and technology support.
Increase.
So right now, there's one at, based solely at Melican?
Correct.
And one for the four elementary schools. So then do we need?
Instructional technology support. So that's the instructional piece? And that's different than the tech support? Which is?
There's like the hardware, the software.
Yeah. Okay.
Wifi.
So we want to increase technologies?
And then technology support. And I think also.
Add support or support presence or?
And technology support.
And what I also would recommend too is that as long as we have the big ideas.
And fine-tune the.
If you have like a good working draft and it's not voted this evening, because we want to just fine-tune the language and vote it at the December meeting, we still have what we need to move the budget process forward.
That word is technology, not technic.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. I'm trying to figure out which, how to spell it. I can't, my glasses are.
Yeah, so thanks, Erin and Kelly, for adding that. I do think that it's important. I know the middle school position was new this year, right? Or was it last year?
The elementary was.
Oh, the elementary was new this year.
The elementary was new this year.
Long-standing instructional technology specialist at the middle.
At the middle school, okay.
And tech support.
And I believe it was reduced, we had an instructional technology specialist at elementary level, I believe in 2016 or '17, it was reduced due to budget constraints or eliminated.
Okay, so that will, I'm going to fix those bullets when we're done. Okay, the next one is the word maintain, changing it with improve the district's capital, improve the district's capital assets versus maintain the district's capital assets. Bryce, do you want to speak about? I know, Lauren, you were saying about the difference between.
Yeah, I was sort of, I mean, and I know this is nitpicky, right? It's a word. So I appreciate you bringing this up, Bryce. To me, because our, our budget priority goals focuses around our operational budget, which is maintaining what we already have in our schools. I like the word maintain better, because to me, at least the word improve means, okay, let's add more money to these things that we need to add more things to our district. We need more computers, or we need, you know, X program, which to me, if it's a capital asset, really comes out of the capital plan, which we just approved. But that's just the way I interpreted that. So I don't know, feedback from other committee members or from admin, what you think about the wording? Again, it's one word.
My question is, does it have to be either or?
Hmm. Right.
To maintain and improve the district's capital assets?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, so that's going to be for the main bullet? And then same, same for the second bullet?
Yeah, I would like that too.
Yeah. What do you think, Bryce? Does that fit?
Yeah.
What are your thinking?
Infrastructure in classrooms? What's that? The, adding in classrooms after?
That was just, that was a remark based on seeing some of the, you know, classrooms and, you know, kind of knowledge of current available technologies and what is, what is available to our, to our students currently in the buildings. And so there are a kind of large, you know, the last 10 years, the development of in-classroom technology has been significant. And I think it's just something that's worth pointing to in the classrooms. But that was just a
I like that. I mean, that's our focus, right? Does student learn in the classroom?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay. The last one is adding a bullet, create and maintain outdoor learning spaces. Love the idea.
Pie in the sky.
Pie in the sky. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think the budget priorities signal the committee's commitment. And I think their, you know, operational budget isn't the only way to accomplish it. So I think it's
Yeah, maybe fundraising or something like that. And we saw the wonderful space at Melican.
That was so fun.
It was great.
It was so cute. We saw it a couple of years ago. Out on, where is the front of the building? I think the front of the building, this way. So over here on like the left side, they have like true stump kind of like chairs around.
Or even, you know, like greenhouses and gardens and, you know, spaces where kids can engage with all different types of subjects in a natural setting.
I love that idea.
So create and maintain outdoor learning spaces. Just as is, good. The next one, so I don't, I felt that meet the needs of all learners and then the with instructional classroom models that are, I felt like that was kind of, it didn't really seem like that was the right need for the bullets that were below it. And I think it was because that was the previous bullet that we kind of slashed and combined. So I'm not opposed to keeping some of those words or any of those words. I just thought that, I didn't think all of those words were the right words to keep for those bullets.
Yeah, maybe if we take a look at those bullets, because I think we just need to be reworded. So meet the needs of all learners and then
So purchase updated mathematics curriculum. We have a question of which levels, is it all levels, K through eight or which?
Yeah, and Dr. Reinhardt can speak to some of the work that we are hoping to accomplish.
So there's a few things going on in terms of curriculum review and clicking, reviewing and selecting updated curriculum. At the six through eight level, our goal is to select new mathematics curriculum and update that. So that would be, you know, a budget priority in that respect. At the elementary level, we are looking at the elementary math curriculum, but probably will be piloting next year in mathematics. But in English language arts, it is our hope that we will have selected and be implementing updated curriculum materials at the K to five level.
So
So this would really just be six through eight then for this?
That would be six through eight.
But do we want to add in the other?
I mean, the ELA is a significant
Right, we need to do ELA. So we need to
It's a significant undertaking.
So we need to purchase ELA curriculum.
I think the other
Purchase updated ELA curriculum for K through five?
It'll be updated ELA curriculum for K through five and, you know, implementation support, like, you know, you purchase the materials and then you have to support people in using them.
Yeah, I mean, I think when I look at this, meet the needs of all learners by providing evidence-based instructional materials.
We could write something broader so that we aren't, because there's also conversations about science at the middle school and whether we need to update materials there. And so I do, I do think that if we put something broader, there are some projects going on related to updating materials, but it would cover all of that then.
Okay, so then we don't need to necessarily
Name each
Name each one. Is the committee on board with that? So we could, with the, so we're all in the understanding? Do you want me to put something here as a placeholder that you would need to then go back or?
If I think about our work next year, our next year work really focuses on middle school mathematics
Yeah.
And elementary
ELA.
ELA.
So I think it's important to list those two.
Okay.
Even though we are still, you know, there are other areas.
Okay, so purchase updated math curriculum for the middle school. Or did you want to make it more general?
No, I just, I don't like the word purchase.
Okay, so update or
I'd say select.
Providing students with evidence-based, current and updated evidence-based
Provide.
Curriculum resources, yeah.
I appreciate that framing.
So provide. So then we're not also going to be specific in the content area. We're just going to say in evidence-based
Provide math
It could be math.
Curriculum.
Six through eight.
Do the math.
Yeah, and then ELA at the elementary level.
I'm just going to do this and I'm gonna just as placeholders and then and then we'll know that we're going to wordsmith that for those things. Sound good? Yes, Joan?
I have another question. What about social emotional learning? There's nothing in here. Is there anything that we need for?
I think we got a lot of grants on that last year.
Yeah, I mean, I would, there's not everything that's listed here that, that we're moving forward. I think if you look at our strategic plan, healthy and balanced, and SCL is a weave throughout and we're continuing to work on, on that, even though it isn't identified as a budget priority, it is a strategic objective.
It is, okay. I didn't want it to be less, because there's, it's very detailed here, so I didn't want that. Okay, that's fine.
I would agree.
Third bullet, support class student teacher ratios in accordance with Joan's suggestion is let's add I-240, so class size policy I-240. And then I say, let's add a link also. So then we have a
I think that's great.
And then, I believe it was Lauren who wanted to add culturally responsive.
Right, which grammatically doesn't make sense anymore with the strike through.
Yeah.
But I know that, you know, especially last year, actually the past couple of years, one of our priorities in our district is, you know, giving our, our teachers and our educators the tools they need to be culturally responsive in their classrooms. And I just didn't want that to be put on the back burner. And just because it's not here doesn't mean it's, it's being put on the back burner. But I really wanted it in writing.
You could say something like support culturally responsive practices in schools.
I like that. Support culturally responsive practices.
You know, what's not, what is not overt is, for example, when we're purchasing or we're thinking about implementing it in mathematics curriculum, it's embedded through the lens of cultural responsiveness.
Right.
So it's integrated in everything we do. So I don't think the immediate is important.
What do other committee members think? Do you think it fits there? Do you think that we need it?
Something even though you couldn't necessarily quantify with a dollar sign, you would want a message out as instructive to the decisions that are getting made.
Okay.
Support culturally responsive classroom practices.
I like that.
Okay. All right. So with the exception of the few things, adding the link, wordsmithing just that
Curriculum?
The curriculum area. Adding a link for the policy. It seems like we're good to go.
I think we have enough.
Enough, you have enough for your stuff.
From our internal team to move forward.
And then we're enough that we'll wordsmith those things out and then we'll just put the final approval vote next month? December 1st with zero discussion people, zero discussion.
One more thing to say. So, you know, today we talked about our class sizes and how, you know, we have caps on classes. So, you know, that third bullet, under meet the needs of all learners, that says support class, class student teacher ratios in accordance with the class size policy. You know, I know that's broad, but my hope is that what that means is, you know, if we need another elementary school position, we're going to find a way to fund it.
And fund it before, before the town meeting. Can we fund a few extra just in case?
Challenge is
Yes.
I guess when possible.
When possible.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, because looking at those class sizes, it was a little scary.
And then just the last thing I want to say is that Erin's, not Erin, sorry, Lauren's note was that she really liked how this draft of the goals of how it was, it's very direct, action-oriented, specific and succinct, which I think we've brought it down from where it was, you know, which that was brought down from where it was a few years prior to that. So I feel like we're, we're going in direction, we're giving you guys good focus areas as a district level.
And I want to thank the administration for, you know, drafting this based on our feedback at our sort of subcommittee meeting that we had. Because I feel like that, you know, we asked for assisting direct, action-oriented set of priorities and you listened and you created this wonderful list and I feel really good about this. So thank you.
All right. So we're all on board for voting approving it next month?
So next in your packet is the FY24 budget calendar. And I'll just make a note of the meeting with the operational budget, budget subcommittee, which is scheduled for November 8th.
Who's that?
I think it's you, Bryce and Erin, yeah.
Oh, that's the seven o'clock meeting, right? Okay. This is Zoom, right? How was I reading it? Yep. All right.
And then the FY24 preliminary budget discussion. So I will start the conversation and obviously turn it back over to you. So budgets were due to the finance department from all directors and principals yesterday. So the finance team is now in the process of simplifying all of those budgets into a preliminary budget. I think it, right now, it's far too early to share too much because we don't have the data in front of us. But we can, we continue to be concerned about what we talked about with the FY23 budget, that we are in a very unique situation with inflation, increased electricity costs. But we're going to remain optimistic and be hopeful that we're going to be able to move our district forward and accomplish some of the budget priorities that we've set.
Nope, okay. School committee member reports. Start down, Bryce, any? Start with any?
Sorry. School committee member reports.
Yeah, so basically like a liaison for any groups, anything that you've been to, any meetings outside?
I haven't been able to now.
No, 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 that's, no, no, I'm just saying, I'm just going down, not putting you on the spot, just going down the line. I just figured I'd start at that. No, that's sort of, you're good, okay.
Thank you.
Erin, anything?
Just the wellness committee has started meeting again and we are working on the district wellness policy right now.
Joan?
It's in your packet. Thank you for putting it in. The K to 12 NEF award grants were awarded in September 2022. At your leisure, you'll see the wonderful things that they provided in grants to all the schools. And our next meeting is next Tuesday. And I'm also the liaison to the senior citizens and the last meeting was canceled and waiting to hear about their rescheduling of that one. That's it for tonight.
And
Can I ask a question about this NEF grant? The self-program for the sixth graders? Which one? The counseling in the classroom.
Okay.
Mrs. Maranci's running at Melican. Is there talk about continuing that program, like at the district? I know that was a grant that she was awarded, but is
I can follow up and ask for more information. I think that the idea around these NEF grants is that they receive money, innovation money to start programs with the understanding that they'll be continued.
Okay.
Yeah, at least historically, NEF doesn't typically give anything that's not something that's, that's one of their criterias. It has to be something that is going to continue on past, past the one year. Like they don't typically like to just do like a one and done experience type thing.
Okay.
So my assumption is that this is probably
So is that something that we projected for our project for next year?
I think that the next step would be, I can speak with Michelle Karb and maybe when she presents, she can speak to it and what our plan is moving forward.
Right. I mean, I know, you know, Melican, well, Mrs. Maranci is doing it at the sixth grade level right now. It has been outstanding. It's amazing. She'll go with the seventh graders next year. So will the next guy in counseling who takes the sixth graders also start that program and keep it going? You know, I'd love to see that continue in all grades.
Jennifer Lipton has been involved in these conversations as well and exactly what you're describing has been, the conversation has started about, so what is the next step and for other grades?
Okay, yeah. What she's doing is absolutely amazing.
Yes, they've been walking around talking about their amygdala and they have like something to do with their hand for their brain and
Yeah, it's been really, really great. So it'd be, it'd be nice to see it continue and, and keep going through all, all three grade, you know, all three grade levels here.
All right. Glad to hear these folks so well. Lauren, did you have any other?
No, no, I couldn't make the coalition meeting.
Okay.
So
So this past month, I have yet to be able to attend an NSPAC meeting with the way the year is gone so far. But they are so kind that they update me with email reports in minutes and let me know what I'm missing and stuff. So just a couple of things from their email that is, and I know it went out, pretty sure it went out today, I mean, like a time warp, but November is CPAC Awareness Month, so light up yellow. So there was legislation passed four years ago, signed by Governor Baker, to declare November as CPAC Awareness Month. And so they say to do different things with yellow, Facebook page yellow for the month as well. So there's different types of things and they have like wear yellow T-shirt day and there's a whole bunch of different things that I think they're planning and all that. So in their newsletter, they've got that. And on their webpage. They have their next meeting, they've got some ISWAP program updates. There's discussions for that. Wait, with all that? So their, their next meeting is going to be November 6th, tomorrow? I think it's tomorrow. It's tomorrow, right? Tomorrow at 6:30, they have Those Kids Learning Outside the Lines presented by Jonathan Mooney. And you can register on their webpage for that. And then on the 17th, at 7:00 PM, they have Parents Night Out at Owen O'Leary's in Southborough. And you can register for that on their webpage also. And as always, their webpage is nspac.org. And you can see their events, their schedules there. You can sign up for their news bulletins and wealth information and a great resource for our district.
So the only update I have is on October 24th, the Coalition for Equity So the only update I have is on October 24th, the Coalition for Equity sponsored their Storybridge event. So the local author, Jennifer DeLeon, and Adam Stumacher from Storybridge worked with 10 community members, three of which were Algonquin students, to think about what stories they wanted to share. And the culminating event was on the 24th and the 10 volunteers shared their stories. It was an amazing event, the stories were really enlightening. It's a wonderful, wonderful sense of community. I do have the video, which I will, which I'm planning on sharing. If you have an hour, it's well worth.
Oh, so worth it. It was amazing, it was such an amazing.
It's great.
It was a really great experience.
And I'll just follow that with, Adam Stumacher, who is one of the people who led it, is also giving a PD workshop at our upcoming PD Day.
I'm excited.
About how storytelling can be used in the classroom to build inclusive environments. So that's a follow-up to that.
Their goal is to make this an annual event so that, you know.
So this spring they would put out the call for more people.
People who are interested.
That's great.
No, I think the thinking is that over students, you know, 12-year experience, they could hear.
200.
Yeah, 100 stories.
Yeah. That's great.
But I will share that video shortly.
Thank you. So. Education policy, it says none at this time. Policy development or distribution, it says none at this time. One thing that has come up with me and my mindset is that when we have open seats, it just happened in the region and in Southborough. I know there's like state level like guidelines on if there's an open seat to fill a position, things like that. I don't think we really have any formal policy written for Northborough specific. So my thought would be to potentially give that to the policy development is to come up with guidelines for if an open seat arises. Joan?
I would check with that because I know there was an open seat that happened onto the Northborough K-8 and there was something that it's by a town governance because at that time it was an open seat and because it was just Northborough, the interview process had to take place with the town.
Board of Selectment, yep.
Town of Selectment Board.
So that's like the state, so the mass state legislation, that's, it comes within all that. But it's kind of like when it, so when the situation arises.
You mean like the time element and thing like that?
Like I feel like, yeah, and I feel like it also too, it's kind of like, you know, if you're going to look at this and some of it's a little interpretive, you know, it's some of it. I'm not sure how clear cut it is with, okay, you've got a 30-day.
Oh, I see the regulations.
Do you know what I mean, like things like that? And I'm not sure how it is.
I'll just comment that what happens is we look at mass general law.
Yeah.
Then we look at the town bylaw and then we'll look at school committee policy. So those are the three.
Yeah, and we don't have a policy on it.
That would help the school committee move forward.
I agree, just as long as, you know, we do put the town bylaws in there. It might be good because there should be like a timeline or something maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and again, I just, I just thought that maybe when we go onto our policy development and districts and think that that might be something that, and again, because it's happening, you know, in our neighboring things, as Joan said, it happened years past here. So I feel like it doesn't hurt to have something written up.
Well, it's good to have a guideline and our policy is one of the things that, you know, with every form, it was policy and budget and the superintendent. So I think that having that in place and.
There'll be no questions then.
No questions. And if somebody hears about an opening, we could always, anybody could refer them to the policy so they see what it is.
Yes, in the guidelines, exactly.
Okay, that's a good idea. Does Southborough or the region have one?
Well, the region, kind of.
The region is by the regional agreement.
Yeah.
Is, there is a policy or it's agreed upon. Southborough does not, so I'm sure that they'd be interested in.
Yeah, because of the region, they're in their own municipality type thing, they have their own like.
Right, okay.
Separate. All right. Personnel.
So the distribution of that personnel report is in your packet as of November 1st and I'll just highlight that Janet, Janet Spisit, a longtime Melikan librarian, is retiring at the end of this year and will have an opportunity to thank her for her years of service. But I just wanted to point that out to the committee.
Question?
Yes.
I saw that we have under resignations, we have one person, they're all into the special aides and one is going up to an appointment. Are we in the process of refilling those other two positions?
Yes.
I know this is important, I'm sure you are, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Just a general comment that our ESP positions are really challenging to fill. That's why we're seeing a real lack of candidates applying for these positions.
How many open positions do we have right now?
I think four.
Yeah, four. Four across Northborough K-8.
Yes.
Communications, in the communications, as Joan mentioned, of the Northborough Education Foundation grants, they submitted their September grant awards recipients. And I just want to say thank you so much to the Northborough Education Foundation for supporting our district and supporting our students and teachers and staff and their needs and, you know, such a great, amazing volunteers who help in our community. We're very grateful, especially the school committee members who help make our budgets a little bit easier. A little bit. So thank you so much. We've also talked about having NEF present in March, at a March meeting or later meeting, to do a presentation and kick off their next grant season. So we will be putting that on our future agenda item for sure.
Thank you.
Actions on Minutes. Any motion?
May I? I'm going to group the first two open meetings together because I think the executive session is to be retained.
Yes.
Okay, so I move that we accept the open meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2022 and the special open meeting minutes of September 28, 2022, as presented in our packet.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Abstained by Lauren. Okay, so it's approved? Yes, Joan?
I move that we accept and retain the executive session minutes of October 3rd, 2022, as presented.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Lauren abstains, it passes. Future agenda items. Criminalary budget presentation, teaching learning presentations, MCAS presentation, SCL screening. That will not all be for next month, just so you know. Next month, we are hosting our first combined school committee meeting, right in this room. And I'm very excited to see how that's going to happen. Couple extra tables, you know, maybe like a little new here.
We'll need some logistics.
Yeah, well, Terry might have to consult on that one for us. So that is going to be here Wednesday, December 7th at 5:30. And then our school committee meeting won't start until 7:00 PM. So I am going to work with Greg on the agenda for that night. And if it's the will of the committee, I think we should do minimal presentations.
Yes.
Just kind of go like the bare necessities of things that need to be done.
I agree. Probably preliminary budget would be the one big presentation.
So that's, that's where we are kind of thinking beforehand that it will kind of be that. We'll just do our quick, you know, approval of a few things.
That's great.
Okay.
Our goals does need to be moved as well so we can approve those.
Yes, those have to be approved. Any other things that you want to see on future meetings? I know we talked about the NEF in March. So the only other thing that I wanted to talk about was the PTOs. In previous years, each principal has done a school improvement plan meeting. At that school improvement presentation, the PTOs would present with them and then give the background and the updates of their thing. This year, we decided to have all of the principals do the presentation of the school improvement together. So then our thought is that January, February, March, April, May, those five months, we'll do the middle school and the four elementary schools, a PTO at each one of those meetings. And with the help of Erin and myself and the information that you guys have asked for, we're going to provide the PTOs with specific criteria, specific questions, specific information that we would like to hear from them so that they can present on that versus just kind of guessing what and having to put a lot of extra work. You know, our volunteers for the PTOs, our parent volunteers, and they have a lot of things going on in their lives and we are appreciative of all that they do for their schools and to have them to take time out of their night and to come to us, you know, we want to keep it as short, concise as possible and informative for all involved. So we will work with the principals and see which ones line up. But the committee is all on board with that, we'll move forward with that. Okay? Approval of bills and payroll, that is happening online, right Becky?
It is, yeah.
Audience? All right, no audience during midnight. Would anybody like to share anything? Okay. So we are going to go to executive session. So we are gonna, do we adjourn though? I think we just moved to go into executive session. So we are going to move to go to executive session to discuss the strategy with respect of collective bargaining. And due to my determination is discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent. We will not be returning to open meeting tonight. So.
They'll say so moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lauren. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Bryce?
Bryce?
Yes.
I approve.
Yes. Erin?
Yes.
Yes, Joan? Lauren?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We are adjourning at.
Well, we're not adjourning to.
Yeah.